Let us praise you. Good Father, we thank you so much for your many blessings to us each and every day. And Father, we just ask for your Holy Spirit to be with us as we work for the betterment of our school system. Lord, we ask your blessings on our students, our faculty, our staff, and our families that make our schools such great places. Father, we pray that you would help us in our decisions to always promote the well-being of the children whose lives are affected. And Lord, we ask you this morning to be with our chairman's mother, Ms. Williams, who will be facing surgery in the next few days. Give her strength, Lord, we pray. Lord, help us to be open always to your wisdom and guide us in the right path. And as for these blessings, we ask in your name.
(Inaudible)
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Williams, we're here this morning. As I said, his mom had surgery, he should be there first this morning. I'd like to welcome everybody here. First item on the bill is adoption of an agenda.
How many of you adopt the agenda?
Sir. Would be made second up in the agenda, Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next item on the agenda is here in the public. Anyone here who'd like to speak to the board, come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Christine Lacazie, and I live at 1580 Highway 179 in Bonneville. The U.S. Supreme Court has repeatedly emphasized and affirmed the comprehensive authority of local school boards to control the schools. However, this authority cannot infringe on the constitutional rights of teachers and students. When considering the recent suspension of Mrs. Stevenson, it is important for the board to remember the major tenets of the law regarding teachers' rights. Teachers have constitutionally protected rights that are not surrendered by public employment. A constitutionally protected right cannot be the substantial or motivating factor in a school board's decision to reprimand or dismiss an employee. Comments made by a school district employee on matters of public concern generally are constitutionally protected. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the U.S. Constitution have been sources of the greatest volume of constitutionally-based education litigation. The Fourteenth Amendment states that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of the law. Courts have interpreted this amendment to include requirements of investigative methods that must not be arbitrary, unreasonable, or discriminatory in policy or practice. Essentially, the amendment demands fair procedures. Fair procedures include the method in which an investigation is conducted. Guidelines for these investigations are as simple as an Internet search or web. However, we are concerned that the methods for investigations, and especially in Mrs. Stevenson's case, were not properly followed, thus violating her constitutional right to procedural due process. Here are some things to consider when considering the rendering of procedural due process in Mrs. Stevenson's case. Was the investigator objective and impartial? Was the investigation clear of personal feelings, prejudices, and interpretations? Was parental consent obtained to interview students concerning Mrs. Stevenson? Was Mrs. Stevenson provided a list of questions that were used in the interview? Was Mrs. Stevenson provided with interview statements? Were they taken on the proper forms? Was Mrs. Stevenson given the proper definitions to specific terms in her reprimand? Some other points one should consider. Was Mrs. Stevenson given the proper notification about her deficiencies? An explanation in written form and explained in detail? Was a written practical plan for remediation given to Mrs. Stevenson? Or a letter of memorandum following each conference confirming the topic, content, suggestions, interactions, and resolutions? Was any assistance rendered? Was there any feedback given after the initial letter of reprimand? All these steps are part of procedural due process. If any of these steps are not followed, then it is easy to understand the miscommunication about what was being required of Mrs. Stevenson. From what we have gathered, Mrs. Stevenson complied with the principle, yet she has still been chastised for her beliefs. Furthermore, one must question the actions taken by Mr. Jones and Mr. Dixon. Is this some form of retaliation? Mrs. Stevenson has held high expectations of her students for the last 27 years. It was only after reporting the issues concerning absences and tardies to administration that life became difficult for Mrs. Stevenson. For more than two years, Mrs. Stevenson has brought her concerns to administration where she has been viewed as a nuisance and oppositional to the current superintendent. After the January 20th school board meeting, a number of questions arose for many citizens across the county. One question was the comment Mr. Johnson made about going along with what Mr. Dixon has recommended. Two questions keep reoccurring. One, was Mr. Johnson indicating that he would always go along with what Mr. Dixon recommended? And two, did Mr. Johnson and Mr. Dixon communicate about the situation before the school board meeting? Section 286.011 of the Florida State Statutes prohibits that two or more members of the board discuss public issues in private. If this in fact happened, then the communication about Mrs. Stevenson would be in direct violation of the Sunshine Law. Furthermore, the Office of the Attorney General has stated that any acts passed in violation of the Sunshine Law are considered void. Therefore, the vote of upholding Mrs. Stevenson's recent suspension by Mr. Dixon, voted in a three to two favor by the school board, would be considered invalid. A more thorough investigation is to follow. To some people, 27 years of hard work and dedication to the Holmes County school system may not seem like a big deal, but to thousands of supporters online and in person, it is an accomplishment to be commended. One good thing that has come out of this situation is that Mrs. Stevenson has experienced the outpouring of love from former parents and students alike. Since this has happened to Mrs. Stevenson, there has been an overwhelming desire for change in our school system. Mrs. Stevenson's situation just may be the Apple Park turnover that will be the impetus for the change we all desire.
I need to interrupt you. You have 45 minutes.
I'm done. Thank you.
Anyone else with lives? Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Veronica Smith, and I live at 1482 Myrtle Road, West Hill, Florida. Sorry. Dirty glasses. At several board meetings, you have all heard the concerns of the public. Questions are asked, and there is little to no answers provided in response. We have studied news articles and video clips from many other board meetings in other districts and have found that there are answers given to the public directly from the superintendent and members of the board, who I might doubt respond directly to the public as they have asked from the podium or during the business portion of the meeting as a matter of concern, or in some cases at follow-up meetings. Our concern is that all these questions and concerns we are bringing to your attention are being ignored. The public wants honest answers to these questions. It is hard to decipher whether the refusal to follow up on these questions are a tactic or ignorance. The people want to support the school board, but that is going to take transparency and openness. I would like to point out a few concerns that have been brought to our attention. This is an opportunity for the school board to not turn a blind eye to these concerns, but to address each one of them with the aim to solve each problem with the highest priority. First one, inaudible discussion during school board meetings. It is nearly impossible to hear Mr. Dixon and some of the members of the board during regular school board meetings. The Attorney General's office advised that discussions of public business which are audible only to a select few who are at the table with the board members violate the openness requirement of the law. Number two, according to the Sunshine Law, public agencies are allowed to adopt reasonable rules and regulations which ensure the orderly conduct of a public meeting with which require ill-ordered behavior on the part of the public attending. This includes limiting the amount of time an individual can speak, and when a large number of people attend and wish to speak, requesting that a representative of each side of the issue speak rather than everyone present. In every publication concerning who can speak at public meetings, the term "anyone with a public concern" reoccurs and suggests that anyone may address the board. Unless you can provide some evidence that limiting speakers based on their home addresses, we believe this practice is a violation of an individual's constitutional right. Concerning Mrs. Stevenson and her sister Sally Brock. After Mrs. Stevenson had been suspended, Mrs. Brock decided to investigate the issue of attendance in Holmes County schools. Mrs. Brock drove to each of the high schools in Holmes County. Mrs. Brock introduced herself as herself and a teacher from Washington County, who was trying to find out how Holmes County handled absenteeism and tardiness within the schools. Mrs. Brock was told several variations of the practice, but basically at each school that it was not required to keep up with excused or unexcused absences. She was told at some schools that the data entry was responsible for this research information. At other schools, the teachers were responsible for it, and at one school, they even stated the administration kept up with this information, but it wasn't always done when she spoke with the principal. A few things have happened since that information was recovered. That has caused a lot of concern for many citizens in Holmes County. The first thing was that students who were considered truant received a letter from the school saying they were truant with some habitual truant. With, and some habitually truant. I'm sorry. I get nervous. This is alarming because this was the first notification that parents received concerning truancy. Second, an all call was sent stating the date on the letter that parents received about truancy was incorrect. Third, the faculty was addressed in a faculty meeting that stating that the letter sent home was nothing new, that they had been doing that every nine weeks. The faculty we spoke to had stated this was the first time they had ever heard of the letters. And last and most alarming of all was that Mr. Dixon said Mrs. Brock had certified letters stating she had misrepresented herself in the schools and was prohibited from stepping on any Holmes County school campus. Mr. Dixon also sent the letter to her superintendent in an attempt, an effort to humiliate Mrs. Brock. Two rebuttals to this claim we find important for you as a board to understand. One, Mrs. Brock did not misrepresent herself, and two, and number two, Mrs. Brock did not break any laws either. Schools are public places, and as long as the educational process is not being disrupted, we do not believe that Mr. Dixon has the authority to prohibit anyone from any campus, especially in the name of public service, and if that individual follows the visitor's rules at each location. Florida State Statute 1003.26, enforcement of school attendance. The legislature finds that poor academic performance is associated with non-attendance, and that school districts must take an active role in promoting and enforcing attendance as a means of improving student performance. It is the policy of the state that each district's school superintendent be responsible for enforcing school attendance of all students subject to the compulsory school age in the school district and supporting enforcement of school attendance by local law enforcement agencies. The responsibility includes recommending policies and procedures to the district's school board.
Ms. Smith, I'm going to have to interrupt you. I need to finish your.
She can take my time. She can take my time.
No, she can't take my time.
She can take my time. I'm going to let her take my time.
You can speak, ma'am. She gets it. She's got five minutes.
And I'm giving her my five minutes.
No, you've got five minutes. She's got five.
I'll come stand beside her.
There you go.
I'll stand beside her.
The responsibility includes recommending policies and procedures to the district's school board that require school, public schools, to respond in a timely manner to every unexcused absence and every absence for which the reason is unknown. Students enrolled in the schools, district's school board policies shall require the parent of a student to justify each absence of the student, and that justification will be evaluated based on adopted district school board policies that define excused and unexcused absences.
Let me interrupt you again. She needs to give us her name and address.
My name is Tamara Kreiser. My address is 3017 Highway 160 here in Bonneville, Florida.
Thank you.
District school policies shall require the parent of a student to justify each absence of the student, and that justification will be evaluated based on adopted district school board policies that define excused or unexcused absences. To prevent the development of patterns of non-attendance, the policies must provide the public schools track excused and unexcused absences and contact the home in case of unexcused absences from school. Number four, the school board is responsible for school board policies. In a moment, you will have the opportunity to attend, opportunity to table the school board policies once again until the board has had the proper time to study the policies. Mr. Dixon has stated at several meetings that this is the way we have always done it when issues or questions arise. We do not know if this is the way we have always done it in Holmes County. For example, the Gap, being an extension of Bonneville Middle School, for as long as I have known about the Gap, it has always been a separate school with its own school number. It doesn't matter where the Gap is housed, it is a separate school, not an extension of another school, like was noted in the last meeting. And don't let the Gap be pushed into oblivion. The Gap is a good program and has graduated many students who otherwise would have never received a high school diploma. They have helped my own son in that same field. If it has always been done a certain way in Holmes County, it doesn't necessarily mean it's been the right way. The school board members need to get outside of the box and create a change that we can believe in. Adhere to public records requests according to Chapter 119 of the Florida State Statutes. This would include information pertaining to hiring individuals with or without certification. I would encourage the school board to ask for copies of the resumes and applications submitted for the agricultural job in Holmes County High School. If you were presented information that was false in nature, the vote could be considered invalid. The district's school superintendent is responsible for the administration and management of schools, for the supervision of instruction in the district, and the superintendent will serve as the secretary and executive officer of the school district's school board as provided by law. In a December 22nd, 2014 article featured on the front page of Holmes County Times, Mr. Dixon made several disturbing comments that have left some citizens of this county very puzzled. The comments below are in response to the recent release of school grades. "Our standards have changed four times in five years, and that's hard for teachers to keep up with," said Superintendent Eddie Dixon. Dixon said the district had done a good job implementing changes to the curriculum ushered in by the Florida, New Florida standards, but that grading is not an accurate reflection of teacher and student performance. "We've lost perspective," Dixon said. "We can't just test all the time and expect the kids to learn." The standards in education have changed. This is true. This is true because the world in which our students have to compete has changed. It is our desire that the board become familiar with the standards faced by our students, and instead of making excuses, get ahead of this learning curve and with good leadership and preparedness. If our students always hear excuses, and that is what they will always turn to in solving their own problems, and the fact is, it just doesn't work. Whether Mr. Dixon believes that the grading system is a reflection of the teachers and students or not, this is the platform that our teachers and students face. Holmes County has ranked 53rd out of 68 systems in Florida, according to the National Center of Education Statistics, U.S. Department of Education, and Florida Department of Education. Nearly every school in this county has seen a letter grade drop or a drastic decline in performance across all grade levels. We are concerned that Mr. Dixon is not even aware of what is required of the teachers and students, and fear tactics for improvement does not work. Furthermore, money and new buildings are not the answer to this epidemic. While these are necessities and luxuries that the state of Florida can afford to give to public education, this too can have its pitfalls. Yet often, individuals who are in office with new buildings are bought built, forget about their effort to improvement and focus on the construction. This political tactic is a trick, a mirage for the public, and this becomes a platform on which politicians hope to use as their shoe-in during an election. We ask that you refrain from using the new school construction as your platform and perform with integrity in mind.
Ms. Smith, I'm going to interrupt you again. You have five minutes to read.
I just have one more paragraph. Leadership with integrity is the answer to turn this around, and we are counting on you. With that said, the importance of a well-functioning school board cannot be minimized. The quality of dedication of the board will at large shape the quality of the school system and the educational climate. We need board members that are intelligent, rational, open-minded, strongly committed to the improvement of school education, able to make difficult decisions, willing to study issues carefully, and ready to devote the time needed to fulfill the obligations of this office. For obvious reasons, you can have more influence on school improvement than we can, and I am encouraging each of you to stand firm in your convictions and resist the toils of the status quo. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please. Good morning, everyone. My name is Mishka Randall, and I live at 1718 Robbins Bridge Road. I'm the owner and director of the Timbuktu Youth Ranch and Rescue, so I have a lot of experience with the youth and the parents in the community. So I'm kind of speaking from the heart this morning. I don't really want to quote a lot of the statistics and all that kind of thing, so if you'll just bear with me. Okay. I'm compelled to speak to you from my own personal experience and that of many of the youth and the parents that I work with and what I hear from them on a daily and weekly basis. Unfortunately, I'm a parent that has removed my own child from Holmes County public school system after great, great thought and despair in the decision. And it's because of the concerns that somewhat are being brought to light now, not just only that. So I just want to make that clear. This is not just this one thing. It's mostly with the inconsistencies in the level of the school board making decisions. So I want to remind you and encourage you to remember and recognize that I believe in all of you. I believe you have a good thought and a good heart and a good reason for doing what you do. So you have the opportunity, and I want you to recognize that, you can create, support, and maintain effective policies for Holmes County schools. The educational culture and the environment our students experience from day to day is highly influenced by the policy that you and you alone set. I have a concern for the test scores and the rankings and the continuation to decline in Holmes County schools. She's quoted the test score rankings, so we're not going to get into that, but this should be an alert that something is not working right and it needs to be addressed. So I feel that you all want to do this, and so I feel we should all come forth as parents, the school board, you have our voices in your hands and the voices of our children. So I encourage you to please look into the reasoning for this and be open to why this is happening and what we need to fix to make it better. Okay? So our neighboring, in contrast, our neighboring counties have some of the highest ranking districts in the state. And this is, to me, I grew up here, I moved away, and I came back. I came back for a reason, because it was a great place to grow up, and I feel that it still is a great place to grow up. So we have to have people that stand firm in being consistent. Okay? It seems that these counties may be good ones to study and learn from in their policies and procedures. Maybe not, but we need to open that door, I believe. Not only is our ranking not maintaining, but it continues to decline. What is currently happening in our county isn't working, and it needs some remediation. It really does. If we do not correct these systematic problems, we continue to lose good teachers like Miss Stevenson and other ones that have been here for a long time, and they've been upholding high standards, okay? If we continue to lose those good teachers that hold our children to a certain high bar and high standard across the board, then we are setting a precedent of lowering the education bar and our standards as a community, and that to me is unacceptable. Remember, these are our children, and just like our businesses, our farms, our ranches, and all the things that make this community strong and wonderful, we need them to grow in a good environment in order to reap those rewards later, okay? If parents continue to see a lack of positive use of the opportunity given to this school board, not to the superintendent, and they continue to remove their children from the public school system as I have to do, due to a lack of good education and consistency, by the way, I want to point out that my student was a straight A student and an honor roll, and she never had any behavior problems. So I just want to make that clear. So there's going to become an imbalance that will cause the school board jobs to be diminished. More and more people will become disenchanted with the system, problems plaguing the current administration. The current power and authority that y'all have as the school board, it's not going to be, continue to be needed, and it won't be valued. Y'all won't be valued if you don't accept and acknowledge the need to change the system and the inconsistencies and problems where it's gone off track, and if you refuse to correct and approve it. If favoritism and inconsistencies in following policies and procedures are allowed, when personal agendas for political gain become a primary objective, and leaders act with coercion and superiority rather than fairness and honesty and an ability to come to the table and talk about the problems, then following policy, education will suffer and it cannot profit. The students lose in their test scores' fault. That doesn't say anything very good about our county, and we don't want that. We are a great county. We want that to show. The citizens of this county have placed a responsibility of creating a safe and thriving educational environment for our students in your hands, every one of your hands, because you speak for us, the parents. And they're all watching to see what you are willing to do with this trust. So I implore you to please, please take it seriously and remember why you came here, what was in your heart when you came to do these jobs. Please. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like the test board?
I would, Mr. Johnson. Paris Stevenson, 1893, North Holmes Street Road. Sorry, I don't have a prepared statement or anything that really intend to speak today. Just a few quick things I'd like to say from my heart. Paris, I hear about Rusty's mom. Hope everything goes good there. Thank you. In our prayers, Rusty's in our prayers. Second thing I'd like to say, I do, and this is from my heart, I appreciate everyone's effort in this situation. I think everyone is dedicated to the betterment of the school system as a parent of a child in Holmes County school system. I have to believe that. We have to take care of the kids. We get one shot at raising them, one shot at this initial education. We have to do that right. And here again, this is especially from my heart. People here today, all phone calls, I've never been a big Facebook person. I'm learning to love it. Just the outpouring of the support of hundreds of people. Very humbling to me. I'm kind of a private person, keep to myself, perfectly content to let other people do that, so it's especially humbling to me to see a really unexpected outpouring of support like that, not just Holmes County residents and voters, people from neighboring counties. Very humbling, very humiliating. Just hope everyone on the board and administration keeps an eye on what our goal is, is the kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
No.
Last item on the bill is unfinished fairness and school board policy revision is tabled number 20. If you can take off the table until it's discussed.
I'd like to discuss it. I don't think we need to take it off the table.
Well, we need to work through it.
I want to mention that it will remain tabled until we go over these policies and know what we're voting on. My fact, I might.
Motion, and secondly, leave the school board policy revision on the table until it's discussed.
Can we set up a workshop? Can we do that in our next workshop?
We can do it in our next workshop.
Next workshop.
Discussion on it. Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, Mr. Manus. Moving on to the circular property. Ms. Owens? Chairman, you have a copy of the circular property that we would like to put in public auction on March 19. Make motion, Mr. Wood. What's clear, your board?
I move that we make a motion the surplus auction will be held on March nineteenth.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
The administrative program, class size reduction, compliance plan.
Right. Each year, we have to submit a compliance plan to the state. If we're over in class size, we would like point seven seven FTE over at Popper Springs in one regular level. And this is our response to it, that we will satisfy this either by addition of teachers or team teaching, and team teaching were necessary. And this will meet the state requirement. And this is more or less an information. It doesn't have to be approved, but I'd like for y'all to get it approved anyway.
Forty-four, eight fifteen, class size reduction, compliance plan, over.
I make a motion that we accept the class size reduction compliance plan.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
Yes, I didn't get... How many did you say it was? How many classes?
Point seven seven. We had three students that were in different classes at Popper Springs. That was all of those. And it's in K through three level.
And do we get penalized for that? Do we get a fee?
We get point seven seven FTE, which would be around two thousand dollars or something. But they also can give us the money back once we present the plan. It's up to them. We could get every bit of money back except for point five percent.
But this is school, all the schools. Popper is the only one?
Right. This is only one. Everybody else was in...
In compliance.
Right. Because we're in like a school-wide compliance. We're not by class. We've got K through three at each school, fourth through eight, and then ninth through twelve. And in those three categories, we're point seven seven at Popper Springs in one class.
Any more questions? Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the student turn it off period of six thirty fourteen.
You should have received a copy of the internal audit report, and we just request that the board acknowledge this receipt and approve. This is a part of our public record. If you have any questions, we'll answer them. Please straightforward, please.
Security internal audit report period ended six thirteen fourteen. What's clear, your board?
I have a question.
I make a motion that we accept the student conference audit for six thousand four N and D of two thousand and three.
Your second?
I'll second. Any questions?
Mr. Hawkins, how are these audits conducted? Is it strictly, is it onsite? Is it strictly paperwork? Is it, how's this conducted?
There, of course, there is some requirement. You know, they have to do some onsite visitation. I don't know exactly how much occurred this year with the particular auditor. They, of course, they obviously look at the records and evaluate internal control, and they have to have some communication with the school system in order to determine the effectiveness of the internal control. And just exactly how that's conducted, I know there has been some onsite visitations in the past. Actually, whether or not they, you know, actually how much occurred this year, I don't know exactly.
I just happen to find, I know, like I said, this is a significant deficiency, and it seems like this is a reoccurring thing we have every year, basically the prenumbered tickets, the ticket log, and a couple of schools, I think, some invoices paid without getting documentation first. And I just wondered if maybe we could, you know, take a good look at this and check with other districts to see how they manage this area. I mean, it seems like what they kind of write us up for is that our bookkeepers have the primary responsibility of these records. So, I was wondering, you know, if we could take a look at how some other candidates, if they're having the same problem, or, you know, maybe we could learn.
The whole state uses a red book. It's forgotten some tickets in ballgame.
Mr. Dixon, will you speak in your microphone? We can't hear you.
The whole state, the whole state uses a wonderful red book, Towahasee. So, all districts have the same guidance on this. The ticket thing is where they might not have given out the number of tickets in a ballgame when they're supposed to do. And that's been dealt with early this year, so that should be... Just like last year, they're supposed to give you, when you get voted, when you're supposed to get tickets, and they don't know that you can track any tickets, and they match up the way they did that, I just thought you were saying.
I go to a lot of the activities, and we pay to get in. And I think we got a good policy in place. It just needs to be followed.
Right.
That's the main thing. Well, there's some, but if you go in and you pay, they put to be a ticket account for what we paid there, and it's supposed to be, they can vote to match. And like I said, I think we got a good policy. I just think it needs to be followed.
It seems to me that having someone that's going to be responsible for the tickets, and independent of the person that is actually giving the tickets out, if that person keeps an inventory, they issue a certain number of tickets, prenumbered tickets to someone, and then ultimately, the account for those tickets return back and/or the money. And so, that's, I think, part of the issue that they're addressing here, plus making sure that, well, number one, we have prenumbered tickets, and that there's an independent person that is inventoried those tickets prior to handing them out to an individual that's going to be at the door, and making sure that that is accounted for at the end of the day.
This audit, is it done yearly?
And, yes.
And this is the third year it's come up with the same thing? It just seems to be a major problem to me. The only two schools that didn't have a deficiency were the elementary schools, and so they don't have ballgames. So, it's countywide, it looks like, and we need to have some kind of a... The principal should be the one enforcing this, right? At each school, Mr. Superintendent, or who enforces this? Just not sure that it's correct.
It's the principal's responsibility to do that. And, you know, having been a high school principal for five years, you have a lot of activities going on. Sometimes you have three ballgames, softball, basketball, whatever. So, they do, I thought most of them were best to do that, tickets. I'm not sure if ours was onsite, but I know in high school, we always had a roll of tickets that they started with, that matched up to what money was taken off. So, I'm not sure what specific instances they did, but if that's true for plays, musical performances, whatever you set off interest to, they have. So, this is a way of kind of, I think, probably what they're trying to hear, it's not so much the tickets being given out at the theme as having the two different people, one, I guess, don't shake the first one's off versus the last one's to. It's not so much as a creative system, we're having the process of two people. The ticket first, they count it out, send it to the bookkeeper, cheer he pays us, thanks to make sure that what they get is what they make their budget.
I think another one of the problems, though, is that you don't have the same people doing this all the time. One game, you may have one person make a ballgame, you may have somebody else.
It's volunteer.
If they gonna be there, they need to, they know the policy and plan how to do it.
There are days when somebody's supposed to take a ticket, you're out, and they can't. You have to find somebody to do this. It's not a separate thing, and nobody gets paid to do this. It's just a volunteer thing.
Now, I would suggest probably to the school, each school, that they have someone in the office that is responsible for all the tickets, you know, that they probably, they may already book a number of tickets. So, if that person would inventory here the tickets that are inventoried in the office, and they have them all prenumbered, loaded off there, and that one person is then responsible for issuing certain segments of those tickets to an individual that is going to be in a gang or a war. And so, then returning those tickets back to the person that is generally responsible for inventorying all those tickets, and no other parts on record.
We might need to take a note of that policy, if I would.
It looks like some of them may just be the fact that the ticket numbers were not recorded. Tickets were probably given out, but maybe the first ticket number was not recorded, the last ticket number was not recorded, so therefore, there's no way to truly track.
Correct. There's a form, and every time, every time you look at your money box, and again, speaking from my personal experience over here, there's a form where you can put the first ticket number on the form, and then the form actually counts up number ones, fives, tens, twenties, that you took out, and then you account for starting ticket number, any ticket number, it should all come out like it's supposed to. So, there's a form here in money box that I'm aware of, it says just that out. Again, you talk volunteers and all kinds of things, but also occasionally, I'm sure it does not be recorded like it's supposed to.
I will point out that the audit did say that these were significant deficiencies, and, but they define a material weakness and a significant deficiency that. So, a material is much more, is greater than a significant. They're just saying that this is worthy of attention, and not that there is any possibility, in their opinion, that there's going to be any material misstatement in the report.
Well, what sends up another red flag to me is that possibly on high school, that they found negative balances in eleven club accounts, and they ranged from thirty-two dollars to eight thousand eight hundred dollars. That just does not sound right. Something, they've got to be accountable for this. And we need to, like, since then, we've got to look at our policy and come up with something to keep them accountable, because that's a high figure there. Can you explain what eight thousand?
I would have to look back at their report to determine which particular club or class that may have been deficient, and it could be possible that after the end of the year, they had some means of reconciling that and adjusting it out, but I'm not sure which class or club, or if it's athletic, or whatever, that was deficient that was noted in the audit.
And this too, said it happened in the last two audits, so we've got to get it straight. We can't let it keep going like this year after year. There's got to be a fix to this problem.
And if there's an intended fix that occurred after June thirtieth, it could have been, it could have been that if they had just stepped it up and done it before June thirtieth, if they had some means of correcting that, it may not have occurred. You know, timing, you know, could be a problem there that they...
Did July could have been wrecked.
Correct. So, they just...
Well, again, at a high school, you've got multiple athletics, multiple clubs, multiple a lot of these, but you've got one dedicated account at the bank that's got all the money in it, but you keep track of each individual's, you know, whether it's FFA or FDLA or volleyball, basketball, football, whoever it is. And sometimes, say, let's say volleyball or golf, will run in the red, because they don't really get to sell a lot of tickets to them who do it. And so, they may run the red all year, and then in a year, you'll take money from football or basketball, whatever, to make that come to zero, so they start with a zero balance the next year. That's exactly what it is. So, it's a lot. As far as the internal account itself, it's fine. It's just you're, it's the principal taking, you know, plus a reconciling deficit, because some athletics or some clubs can't really support themselves, because when you factor in referees travel, there's like golf that charge anything for what they do, so they all the expenses they have are expensed, and that could cover by fund raisers, sometimes the fundraiser not quite covered. So, principals take from that general fund, and then they can all bounce out July one.
It could be that if this is indeed what is occurring, in very likely, is that we would just encourage the principals to do their reconciling before June thirtieth rather than after June thirtieth, so therefore, to make, you know, to eliminate it.
Same thing could happen with the club, like, I was going to a national convention, and they had to send some money, a couple of those you have to reserve for your hotel rooms, and then you've had your fundraiser, and you can put it back.
All the times the principal cover that prior to having the money to cover it, and then as fundraiser, kids, whatever, they'll start putting back the individual's balance out. Sometimes you've got to cover three, four thousand dollars of fund for deposits that the club just doesn't have at home, so that happens sometimes.
And they're keeping track of all this locally, how they're...
The school keeps track. You basically have, it's like you have a bank account. They have two, and every club's got their own account, but at banks, it's one account. The school's on all, I think, the high school, you have like thirty-two different accounts or whatever.
A couple of the schools, too, didn't have their ticket sales report for admission events, so this might, you know, of course, they will get a copy of this audit, right? And the principals.
Any other questions? Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
I vote yes, but I'd like to see this improved.
Chair vote, yes, you have. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is overnight and out-of-state trips.
We've got two. First, from Holmes County High School's culinary arts team going to Orlando, February twenty-sixth through March first. Second, it's possible in our FCC LA, going to state leadership council Orlando, March fifth through the ninth. I wish I would approve both of those trips.
What's clear, your board?
I make a motion that we approve overnight out-of-state trips.
Your second?
Second.
Any questions? Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, you have. Next item is out of county state students.
We've got this, two students, and then leaving Holmes County, out of state, more students.
What's clear, your board?
I move.
Second. Any questions? Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Board, yes, you have. Next item is the senate general. Are you willing to accept the senate general?
I'm willing to approve the senate general.
Your second?
Second.
Any questions?
I'd just like to say on the vendors, I would really, if there was any way possible, I would like for us to get that in our package when, okay? Because it's been a very helpful thing to have.
I have a question also. On the Media Incorporated, was that a check written, and then it was voided? It says four thousand six hundred forty dollars. What was that for?
I don't, I do, did note that there were some negatives, and generally, it just have the same check number. Sometimes, yes, we do void some checks. If there's been some type of reason for needing to void it and reissue, then that negative amount would show along with the, yes, both of those would be listed, both the original check and the voided check would also be listed. And I can, if we can get the, I think, I've been emailing the vendor checks to you all, and, but if it's in the board packet, then my cutoff, you know, there could be checks, first of all, we'd try to get that packet out, or we could advance, and then we end up writing checks toward the end of the week. I knew you wouldn't want to, but we would write checks at the end of the week, board packets that goes out on Tuesday or Wednesday. We would have some checks that would be written that may be... We would have some checks that would, that would be written, that may be invoices there that you would not have record of if I go ahead and prepare to put it in the board packet. Or, as I said, I've been trying to wait to the end of the week, get those final checks in, and then I email it to you all. But, but, you know, I can do either way. I mean, and I can get it in the board packet, or I can try to get it to you, say, by the weekend rather than, I think you got it yesterday afternoon, but...
Well, it would just stay for a two-week period, either way we did it. I mean, you know, if you did it from Thursday to this Thursday for two weeks, then it would be for two weeks, or, you know, and it's just helpful for me to have time to really look over it.
I'd prefer you rather just email me.
I mean, it can be emailed, but I would like for it to be earlier.
Okay, well, once again, and once again, there may be invoices in the basket there that we're asking you all to approve that possibly may not be on my list if I, if I back up and send it earlier. But you tell me when you want it, if you, and I'll, I'll send it, you know, that day. Once again, if you say it's a little late, I tend to, I'm doing it, you know, a little earlier than the day Monday. But as I say, generally, we do write checks Thursday or Friday, a lot of Fridays. And so, but...
I'd like to have mine, like, on a Friday before the board meet on Tuesday. That'd give you time to look over it, and then if I have questions, I can question you Monday.
Okay, sure. Okay. That's agreeable with you all, a Friday? And we would know very likely that we would get those Friday checks that we write. It would be in, you know, be a part of, you know, those invoices would be in the basket, plus you have copies of them. And if the weekend is adequate enough, then that would be good. Okay?
I have another, I have some questions. The ingenuity and the every riddle, the fees we pay, is that an annual fee, or is this fees for the students or what? Ingenuity is two thousand nine hundred and fifty, and every riddle is about four thousand.
Ingenuity is a, that's a fee for course for hours that are taking some classes via the internet, I believe that's correct.
And that's professional services?
That's the training that paid for.
That's an annual, they do this over a year?
That's just what they feel they need to transmit people, or, they need to train, sometimes they train new hires, not necessarily work with, so that's probably the one that they're trying out today.
If it's, if it's a, what is it, a 310 object?
Yes.
Okay. Generally, we put it to a 310 object, often if it is a service. That aids us to, you know, 1099s at the end of the year. In other words, for services rendered, they're rendering a service, ingenuity is rendering a service to the school system in the educational process. So therefore, we would charge it to something that we could easily pull out at the end of the year and say, all 310s for services rendered, we issue a 1099, which is kind of like a W-2. It's 1099, 1099 is issued to non-employee, you know, vendors for services rendered to the school board.
Okay, so the 310 is going to be something like training usually?
It could be, could be. And once again, they're rendering educational services. They're actually teaching, well, well, no.
We're teaching.
Yeah, we're teaching, we're using their materials. Virtual, virtual school and ingenuity seminar, but ingenuity, we're using their materials and, and any services. And so if we have a question as to whether or not we're buying supplies or if it's services, if our, if it's a combination of services and, and materials, we usually dub it into 310. And we give them a 1099 for the, for the whole ball of wax, and they can take care of that on their own personal corporate tax return or individual tax return, whatever the case might be, that they'll be able to take the deduction for, for any supplies that they have actually sold to us.
And this I've not seen before, it says F D O E and men wage garnishment. What, there's three different fees?
Was that a payroll deduction description out of the fore, right? Does that say payroll deduction?
Payables reimbursement.
Okay. That is a, well, generally, we have garnishments against that, if a, is that F D L O?
F D O E.
Okay, F D O E. Okay. If a person has borrowed money to go to school to pay for their tuition, and they are not paying their fees back to D O E for those, for those tuition loans that they made, or school loans that they may have had, we will get a garnishment notice from the state that we are to deduct their payments that they're failing to make directly.
Then we get the reimbursement from them later, or?
Well, well, basically, the individual, right, the person is failing to make their loan payments. So we are taking, we're deducting that from the payroll check and taking that money and forwarding on to D O E.
What is the prison rehabilitative industry, I guess? It says supplies, what do we get?
Somewhere, somewhere, cleaners class comes from the prison system, has a corporation that makes some things for us, like, some, some, it's cleaners, the country, like, was it called? This place in the prison system does it.
It was, it, volume purchasing, or, or, it could be that...
Oh, there's social state business, it could be some of that, and stuff.
The Samuel Snyder, it says five thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars for furniture and fixtures. What, what did that, where did that go?
Uh, what is the code it uses?
It's a 641.
641, okay. Of course, the equipment, the invoice may be in the basket there, if it's not, you know, we got over the holidays, if that's an older, we can actually pull that invoice and we got back up as to what the nature of the equipment was or what happened.
I think it's the computer technology of a whole thing at high school, I'm not sure where they came from, they were, or their lab, they created this technology.
Okay. And another question on spectrum counseling services. Is this, is this the one that does the rehabilitative service? What is?
It's for students with disabilities?
Yes. And is this a service? I thought we hired somebody that was going to, no, this is different?
This is a different, this is more emotional, a hand go counseling.
And is that annually, or is that monthly?
That's monthly services.
The Postaleon water, I was noticing the water is sore. That doesn't look like it's come down any, and I thought we were going to be improving without that, the water tower and everything.
Let me address that off. The city of Postaleon charges us pretty much a flat rate on the sewer. The water and all is, is down, but the sewer, we're their biggest supplier of sewers, and then we have the park down there, and they divide their expenses amongst us. And that's why they stopped already, remember the city council before, and y'all want to try to get any more, I'll advise y'all to help me.
At what park are you referring to?
The Interstate 10 Park, Rester, and all, now we've got D O T down there. But at the time, that set everything up, it was just us and the rest here.
That sounds like you...
Thank you.
I have one question. The James R. Walker, is that a consultant, or we, is it 310, James R. Walker?
Was it, is it 7500 function? Is it, is it Walker Keen, or King Walker is who did the audit here? Now, James R. Walker?
James R. Walker, four thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars. Says professional services. No, it's not the King, it's not the King and Walker, I see that.
Is there second time, is that second take? Maybe second take service.
So where are we coming, everywhere?
Breeze traps have to be pumped, breeze traps have to be pumped all the time at all schools.
Exactly. I know we have that expense up at Popper Springs a lot, but we have taken care of that, right?
Well, as far as sewer, I mean, breeze traps outside kitchens have to be pumped on a regular basis.
Any more questions? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Chair votes, it's you now. Next item, man, what's name?
I reckon the father, Ben Beverly Salas, from curriculum coordinator to assistant principal of Martin Luther School of Baker, who went first, terminate Daniel S. Crawford, decided Holstein High School effective January 30th this year.
Superintendent's recommendation, want to play it forward?
I'm able to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Your say? I'll say. Say it by Mr. Justice. Questions?
I just have a question on our Beverly Salas. I noticed in our grant description, we preferred to have head leadership or either principal certification, does she have either of those?
She needs the qualifications advertised.
How many applicants were there for that position?
I'm not sure, the principal knows that, there were, I guess, and half of those or so, I'm not sure.
And does the principal make his choice? And you, you pretty well back up what he decides?
It's his, his best principle, yes.
We didn't have anyone more qualified for that position?
And she had the qualifications advertised.
Has she had administrative experience?
The only way you get administrative experience is you hire an administrator, like a vice principal. She has administrative experience, in that she was the curriculum coordinator for about a year, in that section.
But she's never had to be over people to supervise them, is what I'm saying. I have another concern. Our policy states that we're supposed to get our agenda seven days ahead of time, and there's no changes that have to be made unless it's for a good cause. And I can understand occasionally getting a change, but it seems every time we come in here, we have a change to personnel. And that's not what the policy says. It says there will not be any changes after we get it. We have to have it seven days in advance, and says, statute says, the policy states the agenda shall be prepared at least seven days prior to the event, and our statute says after the agenda has been made, there will be no changes unless for a good cause. And I think we need to relook at this policy, because we're getting a different personnel sheet every time we come in here.
Well, mostly that's because when jobs close, somehow they close after you've got your package. So in order to hire them on closing, on recommendation, we have to change that for personnel. It's answered with closing, that John, we get your package on Thursday, John, they close on Friday, or we'll be on Tuesday. So we're the way, another two weeks to go position, that's, that's what I'm also channeling right now.
That, that policy can be taught by others.
Right.
If you notice over at the top, it says adoption of the agenda, we know the adoption of the agenda, then we will have the committee take care of that. And years ago, on the school board, believe it or not, if I did that, they didn't have a board meeting like that.
But if we do that and don't have the meeting, I mean...
We'll have the agenda for next year.
We're gonna, or just go skip the meetings, what you're saying.
We try, we try very hard to get a person, you know, by the time you get your package, just sometimes we'll, we've had jobs close on Monday and then on Tuesday, so that's usually, it's a closing issue, because we never know if they're going to advertise a job, because they come over for different reasons, so that's, that's a very fluctuating thing in schools, it's just hard to pin that down to every two-week cycle, you just, you just sort of do it.
Well, now, when we came in for a meeting, the board member wanted to take something off of the agenda, and the board approved it, we could do that, right? You know, if we came in and there was a change, and we, as a board, could say we'd want to take that off of the agenda.
Or table it till the night meeting.
Or table it.
Any more questions? Ms. Owens?
Yeah, I, I'd just like, before, before we vote, I, I am a big thing on, you know, having certified people in these positions. I know y'all get tired of me saying that, but, and that was my question about her, did, you know, did she have a head leadership or the principal certification? And if she does, I vote yes. I vote yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
I vote no, because I've had some comments about this, and I've had some teachers comment about this, that they're not approving of this, and that's why I'm voting no.
Board votes, yes. Approve the 310. Next item is conference, superintendent.
We're at, our district boys championship, basketball playoffs in the regions. Postaleon went Saturday night going to the regional playoffs, and it starts out with Bethlehem and Land Central, I believe in Bethlehem, so that's all I know of.
Ms. Owens?
I'd just like to say, I'm happy to go to Sarah Vaughn, well, and here I've been real pleased with our team. I'm very proud of Postaleon girls, and then, of course, our boys will be starting. I really enjoyed the play, and Bonneville Middle School had a musical that was just outstanding. And I'd like to say that our beta from Bonneville Middle School will be with us at our next morning meeting, to have confirmed that, with me. And also, I had spoken with Ms. Johnson, we had some concerns, and had talked about, you know, getting some help from our teachers on these new Florida standards, and I understand we have a large number of teachers that are attending the training for the C-Poms, and I want to thank Ms. Bush for heading that up and getting that going. I think that's going to mean a lot to our teachers.
Also, it will be the playoffs tonight, and we've got some young people with amazing memories, is all I can say, because what they had to get up their side, it was pretty amazing, but it wasn't up to me to do that. But we appreciate all of you being here, and we appreciate your interest in our school system. I know it's my goal to do what's best for our, our schools and our students, and I believe it is the board's goal to do that as well. So we appreciate your voices being heard. Thank you.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes, I do appreciate y'all coming too, and I appreciate your concern and taking the time out of your day to, to show up at the meeting and voice your concern. But for the record, I'd like to say, our agenda process and the public speaking process at meetings, it needs some immediate attention. What happened at our last meeting should have never happened, and what happened at this meeting today? The chairman said this person could not take their minutes, and then last meeting they could. If we're going to have consistency, if we're going to have one rule, we got to make it across the board. And at our last meeting, the chairman would not allow a citizen to speak because she wasn't Holmes County resident. Nowhere in our statutes are in the Holmes County policy, did I find a rule that said you must be a citizen of this county before you speak for the board? The three counties surrounding us said they had never refused anyone from the public the right to speak. And Holmes County policy, chapter 2.30, states all meetings shall be open, public, and subject to Florida statutes. So if a person lives in Walton County and they have a student that's around in Holmes County, are they not allowed to speak at our meetings about a problem they have with their stu, with their child? I don't think so, and, and we need to address that. Members of the public have the right to be, to speak and to be heard. The Florida statute states every citizen has that right to speak at a public meeting, and I think that person deserves a apology in writing for infringing on her right to speak at this board meeting, and this practice has got to end. I found nothing specific in our policy addressing details regarding a person from the public speaking. I move we make a policy which provides guidelines for a person to speak before this school board under item two, hearing from the public. We need to have some guidelines to go by. Do we have some that I...
to go by, do we have some that I am missing here?
Well, well, I, the morning we adopted the agenda, hearing the public is part of the agenda, if you read down there, it says leave me to comment, it's not more than five minutes.
But there's not any other we've got to have, like the one, she wanted to take her time and?
I don't, well, she's got five minutes and she's got five minutes, it doesn't say anywhere in there that she can give her five minutes.
But we did that at the last meeting.
Well, that was the last meeting, I want to share.
So we have to have a rule or a policy to go by, so we get?
State.
State policy?
Yeah.
We have to have, you know, state.
I agree, we need to stick to whatever policy we need to go by.
Right.
I agree with that.
The school board needs to have policy with the guidelines on, on what they, who can speak and who can, you know, how long, I know you said it's five minutes, but there's all kinds of confusion if you're saying, well, this person can speak, this one can't, this one can take the five minutes, this one can't.
See, all of that's part of our school board policies and so that's what I said we need to start looking at and going through it, as you said last week, finding a tone because that, I think, you know, this is what our policy says, isn't it?
It has policy in there about if you get on the agenda, how long you can talk, but I did not see anything about the public speaking, what rules were for that, but there's also something else that concerns me about, I'll say this for the record also, the Florida statutes and attorney general rulings state a person requesting public records does not have to give their name, so why do we have to give the name and address of someone speaking at Holmes County School Board when this is, especially in this technological age, all of this is going around the world with videos and that would be privacy concerns in my opinion if you're putting your name and address out there and everybody all over the country in the world can see that.
That's right.
And, and just because that's the way we've always done it, doesn't mean it's the right way, especially with the day that we're living in, and I just, I'm concerned, we need to get all this straight and go over the policy and that's, I'm proud that we did vote to table that policy again, so.
Ms. Johnson, you've been on board several years, second, how?
Ms. Johnson, so motion. Well, she moved.
I did make a motion.
She moved to make policy, guidelines, and we're continuing to discuss without a second?
Make a motion?
I did make a motion.
You need a second.
What was the motion?
Reset your motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we as a school board make a policy that would be under hearing from the public, that would provide the guidelines for the person that speaks, what are the rules about the hearing from the public?
I hear second?
I'll second that for, a little further discussion on how this is going to take place.
Okay.
That's, I mean, as we start to go through these policies and procedures, that's going to be, that can be one of the issues we look at, you know, first, but that's going to take us being together and all viewing that, reviewing that and looking at how to, to a member change that, so I'm all for looking at the policy and us developing a new policy if need be. But that's something we can do right here today, right now.
That's my feelings, I mean, I definitely think we need to, to go over these policies, we need to look at, hearing the public, what, what we have stated, but I'm not ready to do that today. I mean, I think we need time, that's the, the thing that we, now, we don't want to rush you in any one.
Any more discussions?
Yes, I want to say for the record, I feel that the citizens of Holmes County are being denied the.